Thank you everyone for being here. I'm sure we've got a lot of fruitful information that will come up today to help us in our budget. We have provided to us now a budget of what is classified or considered the council's budget, which is a result of what we worked on at our last work session. With that budget, you can see that we're still short of having it balanced. You were also provided a budget that Beth had worked on, just some other options that she thought that were doable from her standpoint. And it's close to, probably within $20,000 or $30,000 of being balanced. And the council was just rough numbers, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars short of being balanced. So everybody's had a chance to look at these and rethink things that we talked about last time and make suggestions today of what we might can do or what we should do. So having said that, I'll open it up to the council. And we're prepared today. I think, pardon me, Martha Carol, as we make suggestions, you can put that in and we can see where that puts us in lifetime. So anyone have any comments or suggestions in regard to Beth?
Mr. Walman did bring to my attention on the council scenario, the swimming pool. We did take it out. We had a swimplex and a park, but apparently in my version, I didn't take it out. So...
That's in your version?
Yeah, we didn't check that one.
I didn't check that one.
So in your scenario with that...
That would get you...
That would get us right on target?
Also noticed on your budget, the Dogwood fiscal earnings was $10,000 difference too. On yours, it was 18,980 and on ours, it was 29,334.
I'll have to look at that. Okay. Let me get it. Can I try to...
I don't understand how all these taxes can be less than for next year than what we're getting this year. I mean, like the real property taxes, $25,000, local sales, $100,000. You know, all down through here, one of them is less than this year.
Well, do you just want to go through them? On the real and personal property tax, I explained that although we do have some new buildings, we had a tax sale notice that went out and we saw an influx of payments that we would not receive next year. So to budget the same amount would just not be conservative and proper compared for the guidelines that I go by. On the public utilities and property taxes, that number did come up this year, but I can look into that a little closer. It's $2,000, not hardly $2,000, and that's a number that fluctuates. Interest and penalty, we've left that alone. We typically do receive about the same on the interest and penalty each year. The payment they lose are the same.
Yeah, 21, you got 2100 less.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that is also to do with that we had the tax sale money that came in or we saw the influx of payments due to the tax sale notice. On the local option, sales tax, we actually received monies, $100,000, that should have been paid to us in a previous year. We got that back money, but we won't get that back money, that $100,000, again this next year. We have already started seeing the payments on that particular business, but we won't receive that $100,000 again.
And then you got building permits were down too. I thought with the...
I hope, yeah, I hope that they continue to increase, but once again, when you start to see a trend, you don't budget the whole trend. And if next year we see a continued increase, then I'll probably increase it a little more, but that's a new, that's a new trend that's starting. And I don't want to budget the first year an increase just because one year we had an increase.
And the excise tax was down too.
The excise tax, which number is that? Downtown excise tax?
3430.
Okay, and that number, there's two pieces about that number. That number is a wash. It will come out when we pay that payment out. But the reason that that is, it's also a portion of the sales tax. And we're still seeing that start to increase, but it's starting to level off a little bit. So I will continue to watch that, but... And I can do a chart next time that explains, but when I see a trend, I want to see that for three to five years before I budget to say, yeah, we're going to get a 15% increase again this next year and the next year. Most of these have just started to come back after the decrease we saw in the 2009, 10 years.
And you took out the contribution from downtown. So where is it put back in at?
The contribution from downtown will not be put back in. It is netted out of the downtown excise tax payment. So if you take the 400,000 and for budgeted for FY '17 minus the $42,000, you'll see that then 350, yeah, is paid out to them.
Wouldn't that be missed right here on that downtown excise tax? Can it be minus off that?
No ma'am, because that's the revenue line coming in.
Okay.
On the sale of land and buildings, the council says 150,000, the best is 175,000.
It needs to go to 175,000. So are you working with the council?
I'm flipping back and forth depending on which one we're talking about.
36,310.
Let's just stay with one.
Sounds good.
This is too complicated. So you stay with the council.
Just with the council?
Yeah. That way you can see your numbers.
And let's do mention the page and the number so we can all get there quicker.
And I'm going to mention one item that has not been put in there that we've actually known about, but we've been doing a little research. There's a new, I think I may have mentioned it at the last work session, that there was a rule going into effect that on our salary personnel, I think it's minimum starting December 1st is 47,000 or 47,762, I think. And we have several employees that are under that threshold. So I asked Chrissy this morning to look at what they're currently making versus what we will have to start paying them December 1st, and it comes up to about $21,000 that will be added. And then you have to add a little bit for the FICA matching.
Should they go ahead and put that in the council?
Well, we're going to, the way, and Chrissy can speak to it too, but the way I understand it is that if they're going to remain as salary employees, they have to be at that rate on December 1st.
It's 47 what?
Now, you can do the test on them again to see if you could possibly put them to hourly and pay the overtime. But looking at the ones I'm looking at, more than likely, they're all going to be raised. And that involves, let's see, recreation manager, assistant police chief, HR, parks manager, downtown, codes inspector, and finance. Probably four out of all those are within less than $2,000. Not a huge increase, but you do have a couple, two or three that are going to be pretty large increases.
I'm counting six people.
I have seven. Recreation manager, assistant police chief, HR, parks manager, downtown, codes inspector, finance officer. So what we will do unless we're told otherwise is distribute that to each different department that it falls under. And then we'll have to include any FICA or anything else that would have to match.
So then if you're talking about any kind of raise at all, like a 2% or whatever, I don't think those should be included in that.
No, you wouldn't have to include them because this would be in excess of what that would be.
Right.
The smallest one is 1,200 and the largest one is 6,000.
Good raise.
If you have any questions about that, Chrissy has done some research this morning. She probably knows more about it than I do.
Just lay it to us.
Okay. So the Department of Labor just passed this new rule that says if you are a salaried employee exempt from overtime, that the minimum pay is the 47,000. That's it. So we have seven people that fall underneath the 47,000 salary range. My plan is to get a copy of those seven's job descriptions and do what's called the duties test. And all of this is mandated by the Department of Labor and confirm that they should be exempt or salaried and see if there's any changes or if there's anything that would determine that we change that to hourly. So once we do that, you know, that will, that will be the decision. That will help make the decision on who, on the increases. So you have a choice. You keep everybody that is salaried like they are, you have to pay them. And then that's a rule. We have six months to be in compliance, but...
We just have to pay the overtime.
Or with salary employees or exempt from overtime.
But we'd be better off to pay the overtime.
Well, you can't make a decision, you can't make a decision about exempt status just based on overtime. There are a list of criterias. There's a test. It's about the job done. It's not about the hours worked. So you can't make someone an hourly employee or a salary employee just to not pay overtime or to pay overtime. There are other things that go into that, such as, you know, does their job require them to make decisions or do they supervise a group of people? Are they responsible for explaining policies to other employees? You know, what percentage of their time is spent doing these things? And if they fall into that category, then they're considered a salary employee and they're exempt from overtime. Part of the reason this has happened is because it started with the fast food chains who pay managers a low salary with their salary and work in, you know, 60, 70, 80 hours a week. It used to be 422 dollars a week was what was considered a salary employee, had to make at least that, and of course, now more than doubled.
So if you do the test and that exempt employee does the, from the test standards, fall into an exempt, they fall into the non-exempt, then we have a choice at that time? Do we have a choice at that time or do we have to then move them where they're supposed to be?
We should move them where they're supposed to be. Like I said, you look at the job description and you go through this, I mean, it's a checkbox. Do they do this? Do they do this? Do they do this? If they do, they're either salaried or exempt or non-exempt.
And you think that if they, those that you're thinking in terms of now are exempt, then it'll impact about 47,000, did you say?
20,000.
20,000.
From where each of these employees are now, to get them to that threshold is around $20,000.
Okay.
And, you know, I've contacted other cities and other businesses and I'm reading forums because this is a huge, this is a big deal, I mean, to a lot of businesses, municipalities, and finding out how they're handling it and what they're doing to make sure that, you know, I'm thinking of everything since it's new. And what I've come across is that the other cities that I've contacted, how...
Speed question, Metro 700.
Less number of employees than we do that are at the salary range where they have to make a decision. So most of them are real close to that 47,000 dollar range and it's really not impacting their decision very much. I mean, I've looked at cities that are in comparison with Winchester that have same population and looking at their mid-range salary levels just to see where we are. And we're, we don't pay what the other cities do, I'll just say it. Cities with population 4,000 to 8,000 people, and we have more than eight, but I'm using that because we're on the low end of eight, we're under the pay scale. So it's hard to get some advice. It's hard to compare because the ones I have talked to say, oh, well, we only had one or two people. And I'm like, well, we have seven.
So for budget purposes, do we need to take that number into consideration just worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario.
What I would recommend, just so it'll tell you where you're at, is for us to go into general government salaries, add 21,000. We will divide that out later, but that will make your bottom line number be where you need to be.
And a question, I understood you, if I understood you correctly, we can, those seven would be exempt if we do put in the budget of raise for other employees?
I believe so because this, every single one of those is in a higher amount.
But legally, you can give some employees a raise or something. You don't have to.
Well, they're getting a raise. They're just getting it according to the...
I know. I just wanted to make sure you did that.
I think so.
Yes, this would be a pay adjustment to me. And so it's understood that you wouldn't get both.
So is this in addition to the 418?
The what?
The 21,000. We add that to, we're at the 418,000.
Yes. And then I'll, and when you get your next...
We'll divide it out.
We'll divide it out by department and note on there the difference.
So worst-case scenario, we, we, what we're short is more now than it was when we came in here, about 21,000, right?
We raised 25. We sell the land, so we're still ahead.
You did add that. So we're, we're actually $4,000 now greater than when we came in here.
Yeah.
Oh, from the sale of the...
Yeah. Right, right, right.
Do we still have that piece of property by Daniel, the owner? You sold it? Still have it?
No, no, it's sold. It was done as a trade when we did for the O'Donnell property.
We're making progress. $4,000.
Now, in the council scenario, there was no raises, correct?
No.
While we're on that subject, can we talk about that? I'd like to see us consider a raise for all the employees other than these seven. I know in your scenario, you figured 2%. What's 2% of the balance or remainder of that? Do we have any numbers on that?
Add all salary on that. I can get up these.
Well, if we did a 2% raise, how is that going to impact the bonuses?
The $500 bonus?
Yeah.
I don't know that you'd want to do it at all.
Right. I think I would do one or the other.
Sure. I think the bonus was brought into play when we didn't want to do 2.5.
Right.
I think that's where that evolved from. And I know you excluded yourself in your scenario, but I think you should be included during the tour.
I appreciate that, but I'm...
I know. But that's my thoughts.
I'm going to disagree. I'm going to go with $500 bonus.
Which we do have, correct?
Well, if every employee gets a $500 bonus, say at Christmas time, what's the difference between that? Is there any way to find out between that and say a 2% salary increase?
Yes, we'll give her just a second and she'll total all the salaries and do the 2%. It'll be a tad high because the $500 is included in there. We would have to back that out. We would have to back it out. I mean, basically, take that and then back this out. 2.879, that's rounding, 2,879 is salaries. You would back out the 311,535 that are the totals of these because they're not going to be included. You would also back out $35,500, which would have been the bonuses that are included in here. So that would be your base number for 2%.
Well, I think, I think for the asset that the employees are to the city and I think we need to give them a raise. I think we've gone from, since what, 2012, 2.5% raises. I think it's something that they probably not only deserve, but probably expect it. Also too, I know that their insurance is going up. Cost of, cost of living may not be going up, but the cost of living for our employees here locally, you know, things are higher for them to buy and what they can buy and provide for their families. And I think we deserve, they deserve to get a raise.
You got to think about the taxpayers too.
I understand that. I have.
A lot of places hasn't had a raise in three years now. I think it, we treat our employees good, we can give them 200, 3% every year, insurance, retirement. Most departments get their uniforms first, real good vacation, 13 to 14 paid holidays. I mean, that's better than the industries are doing. You know, I've seen our federal government go 19 trillion a day doing stuff like this. I think it bleeds down all the way to the city. And I'd like to be able to give everybody a big raise.
Just have to see how it affects the bottom line, you know, that's, and that's what we're after.
So if we take the bonus out and, no, the 70,000, what?
No, 70,000 is not in there. What is in there right now is $35,500 and that's $500 per employee.
That's your bottom line. I just changed it.
So you would have to add another 35,000 to that.
So it's going to be approximately $70,000 if you were doing about a raise.
If you were doing, like you mentioned, the 2%.
And no bonus.
You would have to add 35,000 to the number that's there.
Two-thirds of the employees would get $500 raise and a third would get over $1,000 if it went that way.
I just changed it on there so you can see it on the screen. If you did the 2.5% increase, what's that would be?
A 2.5?
2.5, they're talking about 2.
Or 2.
Okay, well, I did, I figured 2.5, so I need to change.
I'm going to change it.
I'm sorry.
2.5 is 80,000.
Sorry, no, that... I'm going to take the 2.5. So it's, that's why it was 71 at the 2.5. So I need to change that.
Because we backed up the seven salaries at 300,000. 57,580.
It's 2%.
It's 2%.
Oh, good. We're going the right direction.
Is how much?
57,580 is 2%. And 71,88 is 2.5.
Well, it's 1.5.
2%.
2%. One of the 43,000, 1,295.
Please remember that that's excluding these seven.
So you're going to add that 21 back to that, those figures?
Add 21 to that.
You got to add the 21 to those figures.
Well, this, and that's, it's included on what's on the screen.
Right, but it's not in the figures that you gave us.
No, it's not in what's...
So like the 2%, 57 would be plus 21,000.
As a percentage, if you did the $500 bonus, that's the percentage of salaries what is there.
One and a quarter, I'm guessing. Here, one and a quarter, 2%.
2, I understand.
One and a quarter. So if you do $500 bonus... So if you do $500 bonuses, then that is 1.5%, basically. I mean, 1 and 1/4%.
Which would help the lower paid a lot better than the other one. Because, you know, the ones making over $50,000 are going to get a $100 a month raise. The others are not going to get less than half of that. So that's reading, I think the $500 bonus would help everybody better, since we're not able to give a big raise.
I mean, I always...
So you're indicating, basically, a 1 and 1/4%, and Bruce is 2%.
Yeah, my thoughts was just 2%.
Is 2%.
And that's what I had asked him to figure. You know, I wanted to know what 2% was, but, you know... But the main thing is, my thoughts is that they need a raise. And if we can budget for 2%, fine, if it's 1.5% or 1% and 1/4. But my thoughts are that they need a raise.
I think it's a very good point about the lower paid employees benefiting better with the $500 bonus.
Yeah.
I like that. I think the thought of that.
I mean, the difference, I mean, in the scenario of 2% and...
1 and 1/4?
You know, what are you looking at, 2 and 1/4?
20,000.
$20,000, I mean. It's not great, no money in the scheme of things.
But the thing about the $500 bonus is you can do it again in the future or not. If the raise goes in, then you're going forward. You're basing everything on that increased level.
Sure.
So I think the bonus gives you a little more flexibility to go forward.
What have we done in the past?
We've got raises every year.
Everybody did.
So I was told in 2012, in 2012, we did the wage study. And it was agreed that going forward, we would do 2.5% increases based on performance evaluations to get employees to where they need to be on the wage scale. Now, are any decisions going to be made based on that?
Well, I could plan to buy a new truck every three years, but here we have a bad crop for two years in a row, and I can't. I mean, sometimes you can't.
I'm just, I'm trying to understand, because...
Hoping we get in better shape another year.
Yeah. Part of my responsibility will be to communicate these decisions made to the employees, and I want to be able to do that. And, you know, I need to understand how the decisions are made, and what they've been told in the past, and why that's been changed. Mr. Marmick, I understand, but next year, you know, there may not... This year is not necessarily a cost of living increase, but next year, it's already been projected from some studies and things I've read, that there's a 4% increase in the cost of living coming down the line. So you do nothing one year, and then the next year, do you double up? I mean, does the city think that it's going, we're going to be in such a different situation next year? That we're going to talk about 4% raises?
Only if you can afford it.
Right.
I mean, oh, my gosh, isn't that what we're talking about?
So, so you haven't got one in three years, because government's in debt, and I think it'd be a lot, a tree of those.
I agree with that.
So, I mean, you've got to look at what you've got.
Yeah, I also try to compare, you know, apples to apples, and...
And they just had five other holidays added to their vacation, I mean, holidays, two years ago. That's a pretty good bonus right there. I mean, you can give them everything if you want to give it to them, but it's going to be a stopping point when money is tight. You've got the money, and do it.
Well, I think whatever we do, we've got to be able to afford to do it. I mean, I'd be the person to agree with that. But I think that we need to be careful about... I'm going to use the word panic. We don't need to panic over this budget. We need to be realistic in this budget. And we need to not panic in, from the standpoint of just cutting everything out that we possibly... You know, that we can at the expense of impacting what our plans have been for this year, and next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year. You know, I think that we need to try to stay, the best we can, focus on being positive and moving forward. And, you know, I mean, we had plans for the fire hall. Now, you know, if we were in a situation this year where the fire hall was paid for, would we cut the fire hall out, any contribution toward improvements? You know, I don't want us, I don't want us to make knee-jerk reactions this year and regret it two years from now, that if we had done something a little different, that we could have stayed on track of accomplishing some of our long-term goal. For instance, in the police department, you know, we had been buying two police cars every year, trying to keep our rolling stock up to date and in good repair. And because we found in years past that we, where we hadn't been doing that, that all of a sudden, you know, we ended up with our fleet wore out. So we were trying to do that every year to keep on pace and to keep, you know, to keep that rolling stock healthy. So, you know, when we start cutting those things out, then there'll be a day of reckoning. It may be next year, then all of a sudden, that we may have to buy three cars. So I think we need to be careful about just, you know, just taking a red pen to every single thing that we can. We need to think about next year, and the next, and the next, and the next. And, you know, I mean, the employees are one of our best assets. I agree with Councilman Spencer. And I think we all would agree to that. Paying bonus as opposed to a salary, you know, that... I mean, I've seen companies that that's what they have to do. That's what they choose to do. And I understand the thoughts behind that. But we do need to offer those employees some incentive to work hard and to continue their employment with the city. We found, until we got into our wage study and made some determinations on minimum and mid and max ranges, that we were losing some of our good employees. And we still are in the police department from time to time. You know, we just can't forget about those things in staying focused on trying to retain our employees. It costs a whole lot more to hire a new employee and train them than it does to retain an employee. So, yeah, I just say that. I mean, let's speak long range and not just one year.
Are any other departments experiencing the turnover that the police department is experiencing with?
So what's the consensus?
What's... We need to move off of this, and, I mean, what's the consensus? But I know Councilman Spencer would like to see 2%, no bonus, if that's right. Is that what you were saying? Councilman Marmick is saying a $500 bonus and no merit, or no increase, merit increase.
For this year, I like the bonus.
Yeah, I mean, for this year.
For this year. Next year is entirely different, but I think for this budget, I like the bonus.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, too.
Okay, okay. Jenny?
I agree. I think the bonus helps your lower paid people. It really does.
I mean, I know that, you know, I keep hearing that, that it helps the lower paid people. And I understand that, and I appreciate that, but at the same time, the people that have been here for 20 years may not be the lower paid people, but they deserve a fair share, too. I mean, let's don't penalize those people at the expense of what we're classifying as lower paid people.
You've only got four people that are making...
They only have different level bonuses.
You've only got four people that's making less than $11 an hour, and they're all in the fire department. You know? So, and none of them make less than $10.50. So, what's your pay range going to be?
Well, I don't know that I have an answer to that. I'm just saying that just because someone's been here two years, and they're at the low end, does that mean that they should get a higher proportion of share than someone that's been here for 30 years? I mean, I think they have value, too.
The large majority of the time, the employees that make a higher pay have much more responsibility than the ones that make the lower.
They do, but if they don't have the lower paid people working for them, what are they going to do?
Okay, so it sounds like, then, that the consensus is to go with the $500 bonus. Martha Carol, you got that plugged in?
It's already in there.
Okay, so it's in.
Can I ask a question? Just a simple question. I've listened to this year, this year, this year, and maybe next year, if it's better, then we'll do something different. What makes next year look so much better? Is it, am I missing something?
We're just only hoping, praying.
So it's just wishful thinking?
Well, Jeannie pointed out several line items where the trend for the year is up in revenues. And, you know, if that trend continues, I think Martha Carol said she'd eventually increase those.
But we're talking about trends that's only increasing a couple of thousand dollars?
Well, let's look at Twin Creek. So there's a number. How many dollars worth is going on in real estate taxes down there?
When will that be realized?
At the end of this year, only Bruce will go next year's.
Well, first of all, all that property's on the tax road now.
But not at that price, though.
That's correct. But those sales will, those new sales that's happening down there now will be on the tax roads January 1 of 2017. And any improvements that are made down there will be picked up as they're made. Depends on, in '17, when those are actually done, completed, I should say.
So you could not realize it until 2018 or beyond?
Well, the values of the lots that are sold, you'll see in '17.
Right.
Yep. But again, it depends on when those properties close and when those properties are improved upon. And I would like to say that... Jeannie, I agree with you 100%. If it wasn't for those people that worked under us, those lower paid people, this city wouldn't function. Period.
That's true, you're right.
Yes, it is, but I really, I truly, I'm glad to see that brought forward.
Okay, so what kind of impact have we had so far?
We're back to, we've come up $4,000.
Okay. Okay. Any other ideas? Anywhere?
Sure, let's knock it out. Let's talk about Dogwood.
Okay.
Do you have enough sponsors to cover the expenses?
Not so forage remain free. Like the Kids' Own, without the city's donation, would not be free. And it's not to say you couldn't get more, but I mean, we're pretty... I mean, we did go out and solicit pretty heavily, yeah. When it first started, it was, you know, they had a lot of stuff in the Kids' Own, and it wasn't free. Everything wasn't free, and I think you still have a lot of people out there.
I'd like to see sponsorships grow by 20,000, and the city's contribution, yeah, we take it over by that, that's my opinion.
Looking at this last thing we got on that, so you've got a wash as far as expense goes and revenue, and it can't be. I mean, you know, right here, you've got Coke purchases, but you don't have sales. And my question, why are you even competing against your vendors? Why do you even want to fool?
Those are Cokes. We provide the vendors, and we make a profit off the Coke sales by we selling them by case. We purchase them for one price and sell it to the vendors that are higher price.
Okay, but that's not on here. You've got Coke purchases, but you don't have sales up here. Okay, and where's the fireworks cost on here?
It's in entertainment.
And where's the billboards cost?
It's in the marketing.
You know, I don't understand why those all can't be broke out, you know?
I can break it out further. I've tried to break it out more than it had been, and I apologize. I was...
It seems like it gets more simplistic instead of more broken out every time I look at it. And your labor, overtime labor was $11,500 for... And don't get me wrong, I don't, I'm not against the dollar. I think it's a great thing. But my big deal is, it should be paid for by sponsors or whatever, not citizens. I mean, it's only, you're saying $19,000, which I question. But, you know, and things changing, like your vendors were down $5,000. You know, you went to food trucks, which really was not totally food trucks out there. What's the idea behind that? If you had more vendors, when you were letting other ones come in...
The vendors we lost this year, we actually discussed with other festivals, with, there were other festivals competing. But all festival vendors were down because there were more, there was half a dozen grad, college graduations that same weekend. It was Mother's Day weekend. All festivals were down about 30% on vendors and traffic both. So I think the big thing from Dogwood would be, and sitting with the committee as well, I think I... My question would be, is it more important for the festival to pay for itself? Or are you looking at it as it was first, I think, intended as something that you're giving back to the citizens as a free event? If it's not a free event, you can mount pay for itself, but which is it, which are, what's your desire? Is your desire for it to pay for itself, and you don't care if the citizen, you know, people come out to it? Or are you wanting the community to have a free event, and that's what you're giving to them? I think that that's from those that I've talked to on the committee, and from my standpoint, I think that's the decision that would have to be made. Because unless we charge for something, I don't think that we can sustain it as a free event.
Free as in entertainment and the kids zone and everything?
So first year they charged for the kids zone?
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
The first, actually the first
At least three, at least.
At least three years, maybe four. If you did the bungee jump, it was five, seven dollars. You know, any of the, I think they had the bull bear, the bucking bull was there for several years and it was five dollars to ride it. It's five dollars, five dollars, five bucks for most things. So, the goal was to try to raise enough money so that we could fund that and not have to charge.
I, I just think there's an opportunity to go from forty on sponsorship up to sixty or seventy. I think, you know, times have changed, but at one time it was in that range, I think, our sponsorship was.
I would think that's something that the committee could certainly work towards. I don't think that's, I think that would be realistic to be able to do.
Well, you're gonna have to go outside of Winchester, you're gonna have to get, you know, major sponsor, corporate sponsor or something like that. But I talked with Chad about the stage and I agree with what he said about as far as downsizing the stage. What you've got now is established, okay? So if you want a, a major artist to come in here, you can say, this is what we've got. Can you work with it? You know, rather than having to go up or down or whatever. And if they know that's what you've got, that's what they can deal with. But I do think we need to get entertainers that are more youth driven than if you want to bring the new people into town.
It's, I will say the committee has dealt with several times a real balancing act on choosing an entertainer because when you are booking that, you need to book it so far out and you don't always have the commitments from sponsors. So without the city's support, our question is, is what happens to book the big name, so we get the sponsors, but then we don't have the sponsors when we're booking the big name and that's their first question. Who are you having and what are you gonna give me?
Your vendors ask that question too.
So that's, I mean, if you can understand that's some of the balance and act that we're playing to is, you know, you've gotta have a stage and you gotta have an entertainer. And most of the, even our vendors, everything needs to be booked by January one is really gone. Most of your bigger vendors, January one they're done, they're booked for the year. And entertainment is not far behind that.
So in the council's budget, the overtime, you didn't figure an overtime for the police and parking lot in the south, did you?
It's eleven thousand five hundred, I got an overtime.
I know it's, so you're saying you, you think I cut it?
I mean, look, in, in police budget-
I know I cut it in mine.
Wages overtime, you got thirty-five hundred marathon, do you still have a forty-nine hundred in there for the Dogwood? That's included in this?
Yes, and then in mine, it does not have.
I know yours, no Dogwood.
And we can double check it, but-
This has it in there or not?
It's still included in there.
So if we got more sponsors and increased that by that twenty, approximately twenty thousand dollars, what does that do to the Dogwood piece of it? Does it make that self-sustaining?
Well, if you take away your twenty thousand dollar contribution, then it would make it, I mean, they would, it either wouldn't happen or they have to find the twenty thousand somewhere.
Is the kids zone, is it sponsored or is it, is that coming out of the cities?
Well, it's coming, most of it's coming out of the city, Nissan gets five thousand for the kids.
That's where I think you could use the same approach that we used when we did the flight rail. If you get your sponsors, you know, if you've got a vendor that earns twenty-five hundred dollars, you get a twenty-five hundred dollar sponsor. Will you sponsor this thing? And that, that whole thing I think could be sponsored.
Like individual aspects of it?
Individual, you break it apart and say, will you sponsor this? Will you, this is five hundred, will you sponsor this? You know, and you get your sponsors that way.
And some of your smaller businesses could afford that?
They can afford to do that. Or even two, two businesses going together and sponsoring one thing, you know, there's lots of ways it could be done.
Get your money in about thirty percent.
Jean, you've been chairman for two, three?
Five times.
Five times. So if you were going into being chairman again and city cut their twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars out and you realized that you were gonna have to-
Raise twenty more.
Raise twenty more, how would you feel?
I'd go for, I would try and work on some corporate things, which I think some of that's already in the works. And I would also use the suggestion of getting pieces of it paid by individual sponsors. We used to do some of that. I remember so and so brought the singing in the shower, you know, when, we, we used to do stuff like that.
Improvise, you made things that were fun.
The sponsorship has come down a little bit and it just need, we need, we need to beef that back up, is what I think.
Are the vendors' fees, are they in line?
We actually increased the, this last year, we have looked at those comparable to other festivals, the sauce, and they, we feel like that they are in line.
So if we take the twenty out, then that gives us twenty more thousand dollars and we're up to twenty-four thousand. I mean, you think that's workable, Jean?
I, I think it is.
I mean, you, you should know, I mean, you've been there five times, so.
Yeah, I think you've, you've gotta, you gotta go out there and sell it and ask for it, you know? For sponsorship.
Which is not easy.
It's not, yeah.
Well, not all that, but you have to realize, and I, and I, I agree with you, but there's corporations that are setting around the table, just like y'all are sitting right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
And, and I think that that's a lot of what happened too, the sponsorships.
Yeah, because we did, y'all all loved it. We had not so good times there for a while, not, not necessarily the city, but you know, everything.
But you know, if, you know, if you do take those pieces of the kids zone, for example, break out each apparatus and figure what it's costing us to provide that free to the public and ask a sponsor to take on that piece of it, put their name all over it. That might be some, some really good advertisement for them, you know? The trampoline exclusively brought to you by Bluefront, whatever the case may be, you know?
Okay.
So you want me to take that out? What is that total on yours budget? I'm sorry, I don't have that Dogwood breakout sheet. Nineteen? I'm just gonna take-
Nineteen, four, fifty-five, eighty-six.
Nineteen, four, fifty-five, eighty-six. I'm gonna take that out of the entertainment separate so I can see it, but that way- it'll round it.
How many, you apply for the grant funding for entertainment? Cause you've asked for a certain amount or is it just, that's what's available?
No, well, we ask for more and it's usually through the state. It's an arts grant. They can give you up to eight maybe. We usually get two thousand, which means we have to match up with two thousand.
So then you need to keep the match in?
Yes.
And, and the Bonnaroo, is that pretty well always that amount?
Pretty close, it runs twenty-seven, eight thousand a month.
Okay, anyone else have any ideas? Still, what? Hundred ninety thousand?
A hundred thousand.
A hundred, yeah.
Unless some of the department heads squeeze, eke out a few. You're like us, you're just, you're strapped. I know.
Remember that old song, if we can make it through December?
Could be our theme. And then maybe June seventeen.
Where is that transferred to the sanitation fund?
Uh, we get to pay for part of our employees, we get to count them.
You're wanting to know about the transfer into the san, that we transfer to sanitation? That's the portion of the sanitation that the city transfers to keep the fund balanced, the sanitation part. We count five, um, we can count up to five, I believe, we have.
It's actually public waters.
It's a portion.
You're using fifteen dollars.
No, no, the, the actual money that the residents pay on their electric bill actually pays for that. Right, now every year we, they readjust that. We did fortunate this last year, but we probably will see this next year an increase. Cause I think it's been two years without an increase.
What is the proceeds from debt finance? Uh, page three. Thirty-six, nine hundred. We've got two hundred thousand in sixteen and zero in seventeen.
The two hundred thousand is what was actually, technically it was, would have been in fifteen, but the paper was signed July first. Um, we didn't get the fire truck till the end of June. And so, um, because of the audit, they require us, paperwork was signed July one, it became sixteen's baby.
So that was for a fire truck?
I've got a general question, Beth. As we've been going through and making adjustments, these, are we, we're making adjustments to the council scenario? Okay. So, are we going to, when are we gonna decide if we want to incorporate your scenario into parts that we haven't discussed yet?
Actually, mine probably, my, mine actually has less than that. So if you wanted to take something from mine that you like and put it in here, we're gonna do that. Which part are you talking about?
Well, it's a laundry list, I mean, we've talked about a couple of things, but I mean, are we gonna?
The purpose of my scenario, what we did, the, the one that is actually on the screen right now is based on our last work session. And everybody said, we wanna try to put that back, we wanna put this back, we wanna put more police cars. So we, we incorporated all our notes, so that's where we started. I come back and try to compromise, basically. So I actually had more cuts than y'all actually showed in yours.
That's what I'm saying.
In order to try to balance it.
Do we wanna pick up some of those additional cuts that you identified? Besides what we've just discussed so far?
It would be worth going through.
But you know, the proceeds for debt finance and ours is zero and yours is five, five hundred thousand. And why is ours zero and yours five hundred thousand?
Because when we met last, at the last work session, we did not discuss, y'all did not ask me at any time to put in anything on, you know, debt proceeds financing. Beth, in her scenario, went back and said, okay, let's look at some creative ways to do some of the projects we need and she put it in hers.
Borrow the money.
Borrow the money and do it.
To borrow the money, do it and pay five payments and be done.
Who are we borrowing this money from?
Well, I mean, that would, that's a whole nother, that's a whole other story, I mean, I have quotes from-
Isn't there municipal?
I have the T M L pool, I have a quote from them, I actually think your local banks probably gonna beat them.
The last two times the local banks have been, beat the municipal.
Then I have talked with one of the local banks. But I would, I would talk with all of them if we were actually did that.
Rural Development is another option.
So that's, you know, if we decided to do that, we would shop and try to get the best buy. I can run down, Jean, and you can stop me. Some of the things that were, were in my budget, I put back one for tro car and said if the second one was necessary, it would be possible that it might be bought from the truck.
You know, my suggestion on not purchasing the two cars was not to abandon the keeping the fleet fresh, it's just that in this particular year with the way the, the budget looks, I was just, my question was, can we forego one year? And add, and have, you know, you know, just do the maintenance on two cars for another year?
I will tell you, prior to us getting on the schedule of buying two cars, our maintenance costs were a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Now it's nothing. And we're paying eighty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars to buy two cars. It's cheaper than the maintenance would cost us. Now granted, it won't cost you that in the first year.
Right.
But it will be higher than it is.
Eventually, we'll understand that, but we're, we're looking at, if you, you know, if you're looking at some of the things that we've cut, I, it's just, in my mind, it weighs out to be one of the things we need to have on the table, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I think we need to keep at least one car.
Keep one.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm afraid if we don't, if we, if we cut that out, that we'll find ourselves next year, and I think Chief Greeson made a, a good point that no one knows what next year's gonna look like.
Right.
But I wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if-
I didn't write that inventory.
Then you see, you don't have any cars when you've got twenty-four.
What is your, what is your life on the vehicle when you're rotating them out like that?
Can we, can we have one person speaking at a time, please? So, my point I was making is I'm afraid next year is gonna have its challenges as well.
Right.
And next year we may find ourselves then having to put three in instead of maybe two or maybe one. So, I, I, I agree, I think that we, we'll, we'll try to keep that one.
Seems to be the consensus.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering, what, what's the rotation and what's the year, the average? Life expectancy of the car?
What we, what we've been able to accomplish, and I think is very admirable, what we've been able to accomplish by updating our fleet, we've been very diligent about doing this. So right now we roll two out of the fleet each year where we buy two, and those two we roll out, go into pool cars. Normally they're over a hundred thousand miles on them. We got, we're about a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten, a hundred fifteen thousand miles that come up for re, replacements. We've rolled down the pool cars for our motorcycle guys, bad weather, hit them, the weather, ice, snow, rain. But they'll have a couple of cars that'll have to drive if we have somebody, cars in a shop, we have a spare car. And then those two pool cars roll out the next year when two more cars come in. So we, but we've been able to, literally, the savings that we have made in maintenance costs alone, when I got here fifteen years ago, actually pays for the new cars every year. And we got on a set amount of sixty thousand and normally we come in about fifty-five or fifty or, depending on how kind of deal I was getting, get out there. Uh, this year we came in at forty-seven, cause I found a couple of years, I don't care about the year, as long as there's no miles on them. And we bought a couple of fourteen's this year, year old, to save some money. But it really keeps our fleet up to date, our maintenance costs to very minimal. Plus we get a hundred thousand mile warranty on the ones we're doing. So by the time they come off the road, the drivetrain is warranted, so any transmission, motors, anything like that, any major repairs is covered under warranty. So we, it's really saved us a whole lot of money. And the only thing I'm worried about is when you're behind that schedule, we are going to start easing back. You know, we need to be conscious of our history and be, well, we won't be destined to repeat it, you know, by doing that. But I think if you get one car, we could probably, you know, we could buy whatever you say is a day.
What's the average mileage one gets in a, in a year service? Just rough?
We get about twenty-five thousand miles a year, one car, some more, some less. We'd get about twenty-five thousand miles a year, one car, some more, some less. Rookies do a lot more miles on cars than others.
About a four-year cycle then?
That's what I was wondering, how many years?
Four, five-year cycle?
Well, we actually get more than that. If you look at, uh, I think last year, we saw old four models, we're getting about almost eight, nine, ten years out of them. So, I mean, it depends, you know, and I only go by mileage, I look at who the two highest, regardless of who has them, whoever's got the two highest mileage. Also, now thirty percent of our fleet, all investigators' my vehicle, everything is paid, uh, we paid it out of the drug fund for all these years. So the general fund has never bought a vest vehicle for any investigator or administration at all. Of course, now, we've been giving half our drug fund now back to the general fund, so that, our, uh, that's going down, you know? That balance, and that fund's going down too, each year, so, but we're still holding on, right now.
Okay, Beth, you want to go ahead and cover some more of those?
And I believe this is in yours and in mine, we put the purchase, purchase of the bush hog under state street aid, and left the chipper in the general budget.
No, we took, in mine, we took both of them, we're in, all it's in state street aid.
Okay, great. Um, put twenty thousand dollars back in for the paving of the walking trail. Originally, Darryl said his estimates were forty thousand dollars. And when we looked at it, my conversation was there with Darryl, is how much, do you think we could do it for half that if we just did the heels and the areas that are the highest liability for us? He thinks that we could.
I want to go back one, the, the, the two big items that were put in state street aid now. The advantage there is, that fund is not-
Included in the general fund, so those monies-
In essence, that's a budget savings.
Yes. Yeah, so that's ninety thousand dollars.
That's the way I was thinking about it, but I just want to make sure I understood you right.
For the walking trail, so I recommended, it's putting twenty thousand back in, trying to alleviate, um, to not have to close the walking trail, but to reduce the liability. So I don't really know how y'all felt about that, but, um-
It was forty?
Originally, it was forty, and then your, the council scenario, it's zero. Um, we did talk with, um, the grant people about the community, community facilities grant, and we did get permission to use that on the N H roof. So, uh, that's, should be in there, fifteen thousand going in to help us with that. So it would reduce the cost of the roof was gonna cost us forty-five, it would cost us thirty now.
So that's the council's budget also?
Yes, we went ahead and put that in, because I felt pretty confident that y'all weren't gonna turn down. I did recommend that we borrow the money for the roofs and the Dry Creek Road, approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Put us on a hundred thousand dollar a year payment plan, to get those big ticket items done and out of the way. And it would be easier for us to budget. We knew exactly that we hadn't budgeted a hundred thousand a year.
What is the deal on the, the road that you're talking about?
Under, um, our contract with the developers for Dry Creek, the only part that the city is actually responsible for is from the entrance to the ninety-degree turn. And that's actually in the contract, that we will provide that road. It's also, um, the same road that we, we applied for a federal land access grant. And if we do it to federal specs, I think it was one point two million. So it's gonna cost us about the two fifty, the same as it would if we just went out there and built it, but it would not be to the quality.
Okay, but then, with the Marina people, will we be satisfied with that? And what are the liabilities?
Well, like I said, the, the federal road will be much higher standards. But, um, we don't know when we would be able to do that. Right now, we actually haven't signed any paperwork on it, so, I mean, it's gonna be a couple of years out. But that's why I was estimating the two hundred and fifty, because either way, it's gonna be in that ballpark.
If you go ahead and do that road, is that gonna allow the Marina to get started sooner than what you thought?
Well, they're still at the mercy of T B A. Um, they are expecting to get their permit, uh, summer, the later, the late summer.
Part also was, you really don't want to do it right now, because you don't have all the stuff.
Heavy equipment.
Yeah.
Sort of keep it down to a minimal, get that down, all the most of the heavy equipment, stuff in and out, before you put a new road in there to-
One thing I did ask, um, and we've got to find out if you can do that, is similar to me or you going to get a line of credit, where we wouldn't pull the money out and start paying interest on it until you actually needed it?
Now, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that included in engineering?
That, it's not, if you, if you go with the grant, it won't include the engineering. I think roughly, we've already done some engineering on it.
Well, we've done cost estimates.
There's, um, the engineering cost with the grant is totally different from just a project, um, because there's continued inspections and requirements, and even more so with the federal monies than state monies.
But you still have an engineering fee even if you did it without the-
Yeah, we're still gonna have to have specs drawn up.
So you don't have an idea of how much that's gonna be?
Steve, do you have a guess?
Ten percent.
But I would anticipate, um, that we would actually do the roof, the two hundred and fifty in this fiscal year, because we need to replace the roofs. The other two hundred and fifty, I used that as a round number before I'd even contacted anyone. The other two fifty, I would estimate would be in the next fiscal year. Because if, if they don't receive their permit, permitting, so, you know, going in towards the fall, late summer or fall, um, you know, they want to put the docks in when the water's down, but then, they're gonna have, they're gonna have many, many months of construction going into itself.
To do that half million, Beth, basically, what would that cost the taxpayers if you did it in five years?
Um, well, it was gonna be, if you did five hundred, was gonna be five thirty-eight, so it's probably gonna be two sixty-five, two sixty-seven. I'm assuming happening if we just did two fifty. And like I said, I have not contacted everyone, I just wanted a ballpark figure of, on financing costs. Because the city normally does not borrow money.
Right, and what, what was that financing cost again?
Um, I had it, I don't know.
That, that would be a total for the five-year period?
Yes. It's two point five four, and that was with the T M L pool. That's who I contacted first. And then there's, um, also, uh, the five hundred dollar fee for just issuing some paperwork. And it can be paid off early. So that was a scenario that, um, I thought would, would be worth us entertaining, especially, we do desperately need roofs. Um, the majority of my comments revolved around Christmas bonuses and raises, and I think we've covered that, and I think everyone knows where I stand on that.
I was gonna make sure we didn't miss something that you were proposing to-
We've discussed Allwood, that was in there.
Well, you took everything out, Doc, so you proposed it to just continue it?
And, and my thinking on that, it's, it's same as you, I'm not against Allwood, but, um, it was just a message that it sends to our employees.
So-
So your messages, the employees are more important than the festival?
By far.
So, using your scenario of the things that, the things that we could use out of there, are there things in there that you think we could use?
Well, the, the, the one car was added back, so that needs to be in the council.
It's in the council.
It's in the council, okay.
It's already in the council.
That's the, that's the one thing, and then, uh, uh, I don't know, I think maybe we need to talk about this method of paying for the road and roof somewhere, I think it may be some-
In, in the councils, if I'm, we've changed it so many times, sometimes I get confused. Uh, the roof's completely out, except the N H.
Then we can be sure. We've looked at it so many times.
I mean, we would take numbers out to see what it did, we'd put numbers back in.
We'll need to add the engineering to the budget.
The engineering is included in the roof.
It's eighty-five hundred for the engine.
Well, there, there's nothing wrong with, or I don't think there is, in borrowing, I mean, we have borrowed before, it's been mostly on owner finance. You know, we bought the police, right, department from the county, we, uh, we bought, uh, the, the fire station from an individual, and we did some trade on that, of the lot that we had. But at the rates that we would be borrowing at, to, to help us get things done immediately that-
Two something's free.
That a real high priority needs to be done, and pay it back over, say, a five-year period, I don't think, I, I personally don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Two percent, or is it two point four percent, or as you said? Two point five percent?
Five four, I think, if you don't do it, get it before it rises.
So I, I mean, I, I, I think that that would be a vehicle to help us cure some of, some of our budget woes, and also, take care of some, some maintenance issues that we need to, need to address.
So if we're borrowing that, then you're pulling those costs out of us?
Yes, you're leaving in, well-
You'll increase, you'll put in the proceeds from debt financing, is what you'll do, for this year, and then next year, you'll have a debt payment that you'll budget.
A hundred, whatever, a hundred and seventy thousand, depending on how much you borrow.
So where does that put us at?
Well, do, do we, can we answer that logically, the financing piece? Did you have that worked out in your scenario?
We would have to, we would have to go down, plug it into the debt financing.
That'd be next year. Next year is when it-
Because we wouldn't even have a payment this year. We may have some costs, but most of the time, we don't have those costs. And I, I will say that it's admirable that the city-
But, would that, would it not offset some of what we have budgeted for that expense of the one roof? Or did we already take that out, so it's not even?
No, we have them both in there.
Okay.
The difference in the council's budget in mine is by borrowing the money, you're taking out the five, you know, whatever, two hundred, or two hundred and fifty, or-
Right, so the road is not-
Thousand out of there, and you'll pay a hundred thousand next year.
Basically, on, basically, when you're off, you just borrow, you're, I don't want to say that, but you're just, you're pushing that portion of it off for a year. So, this year, you'll have the money, you'll borrow the money, you'll have the money. Now, next year, you're gonna have to make a payment for half of that, and then the next year, um, you'll have to make another payment. So you will, next year, then you'll see an increase in your debt, your transfer to debt fund for those financing costs for the, to pay that payment.
It's basically just a vehicle to get what we need and to help with our budget situation. And it is admirable that, that Winchester doesn't borrow money, I mean, we've always paid cash for everything. But we are one of the very, very few cities. I mean, they use it for that reason, even when they have money at the source. So I think with the new rules, um, that we're having to follow, you're gonna see just about everybody have to go down that path, even if they want to.
Where did we bill sidewalks this year?
We haven't.
Spent sixty thousand, just had a budget here.
On state street aid, there's a budgeted for sidewalks, Steve can speak to the sidewalk program.
Because of ADA situation we're in, uh, I'm, I'm gonna stand still, I don't know what to do, I'm gonna be honest with you. You're gonna spend that much on engineering to get it done, to pay, to spend that much money, so, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm not gonna sit there and ask you for thirty thousand dollars to engineer, and buy it right away for thirty thousand dollars worth of work.
And that's even just to replace what's there, Steve?
Yes, matter of fact, the standards have changed since I've talked to you the last time. They were a thirty-six inch platform, now they've gone up to forty-eight. So, I mean, really, there's just, I don't even see any way to do it, without purchasing land, without purchasing right away. They've almost made it impossible. With the grade changes, the engineering that would be necessary. You'd be doing almost what we're doing out here, you'd be tearing complete blocks out, re-engineering and putting them back.
Can we do repairs with all that? Can you do repairs?
I can do an asphalt overlay, but, that we're going to. That's what I'm saying, it's, it's really put me in a bad bind on sidewalks.
That's federal, right?
Yes, sir.
So, are we able to, to effectively change these numbers into the council's scenario and see what that?
We're-
See what that's gonna do?
We're now at one million sixty-seven thousand dollars for the fund balance at the end of next year if we borrow the money for the roofs. So we would have a, be effective with the budget, the, uh, I would just like to say with that in reserves, if we have a similar budget next year, we won't, we won't, if you vote in this budget currently as stands, yes, you will meet your fund balance policy, which is what you're worried about for this year, but we will be having the same conversation next year. And the problem is, is you've already borrowed the money, so what are you gonna do to meet your goals next year? You know, when you need, when something happens, the laptop, for instance, that we used last week, crashed. We normally have money, but everybody's cut, and to the point, we have no money, so, that laptop, I'm having to borrow people's personal laptops to do this presentation. So just think about that, because I know we're all worried about this year, but as a finance director, I'm worried about the next five years, and currently, we'll be sitting here doing the same conversation next year, and you're already using some of the avenues that one would suggest. So just keep that in mind.
Well, I mean, again, uh, you know, property tax should be higher, sales tax should be higher. We should, we should grow our revenues, year to year.
And I, we should, and I think that we are at revenues, I do anticipate some growth, but I don't think the growth is gonna, is, will be enough, looking at the trend, even if you looked at this year, to cover the increase in expenses and future capital projects. So that's-
I guess I'm more optimistic.
Well, that's the accounting, I guess, in me, but-
Hey, I remember when the state legislature said we needed to have an income tax, and the next year, we ended up with a surplus? After not passing the income tax?
Right.
One of the things, that is something to mention too, one of the line items you see in here this year, um, the state, it's the state hall tax, is what they call it, um, will be, they will, are taking that away from the cities over the next five years.
Yes.
So that's a line item that we will see decrease over the next five years.
I mean, it's not huge for us, but-
Right.
It's still-
We need some money.
So if we were to, oh, and I appreciate what Martha Carol's saying about next year, because I, I, I do believe next year, we're gonna have, we're gonna be facing challenges, many of the same challenges, probably. But, if, if we're leaning toward borrowing the money to take care of- But if, if we're leaning toward borrowing the money to take care of, of expenses that we have, that we need to take care of, and amortizing that over a five-year period, I think, if we're thinking that, do we need then to have a new budget prepared with these changes? Get it back out to everybody, so we can actually see what we've done today? And then think about the steps that we're taking to get us to that point. You know, do we really want to do these things, or do we want to do something a little different? But it seems like every time we come back, we, we, we think someone will have thought of something that we might tweak a little bit. But having said that, you know, is there anything else in here that we need to, or that we can do to help with our budget?
What I would propose too is just to give y'all an outlook for next year, so that, um, you can see that, is put in a similar budget for next year that we have this year, in that column that you see budget eighteen, and roll that fund balance number over, so you can go ahead and be thinking about where you're going to be next year. Um, I think that's going to be an important factor.
We, we can do that for you when we send it out.
One thing, we're going to have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar roof taken care of. We're going to have a tractor and bush hog taken care of, a chipper truck, and a road to Marina that we're not going to have.
The road to the Marina is not in there.
It's not in here.
No, so that's when I said, next year, you're going to have the road to the Marina, which is equivalent to the roof. So are you going to go out and borrow the money again to complete that capital project? You know, are you going to hope that your revenues increase that much, that the Marina comes in? Those, I mean, they're admirable and optimistic things, and I'm like you, I want to see the city grow, and I'm excited that it, you know, I want to see it boom, but at the same time, I have to be realistic, that those are things probably three to five years out, as far as seeing the income and being able to count on it and budget those. So just, I think that'd be a good exercise to show.
I was thinking like you, I thought the five would cover the road end.
I did too, how much are you going to borrow then?
Well, in, in mine, I did say borrow it all.
Yeah.
But in reality, we're probably only going to use two hundred and fifty for the roofs this fiscal year.
Say, well, hell, that two fifty plus tractor and bush hog and the chipper, another hundred thousand.
But you will have a payment for that two fifty.
Paying for that two fifty. And then, let's think, pause, see, we just saw in the paper where we're going to get a new industry. Nissan's doing a lot of construction out here, let's think if we're going to do better next year. And shop at home, always remember that.
So not having the chipper and those expenses next year would, in theory, just about cover our payment next year?
Those came out of state street aid, so that's not going to stand.
Ninety-four, not in your job.
Okay, okay, all right.
But I think that'd be a good exercise for y'all to see the budget eighteen, an idea.
So what we will do, we will copy and paste seventeen's budget into eighteen, and then take your fund balances, and it'll show you where you're going to be at the end of the next year. So then that will help you make some decisions. Um, and we can estimate on capital outlay, what we think, ballpark, a reasonable amount, not a, not a wish list, but a reasonable amount of what we think. Buy, like, you know, if you're taking a mower out from Darrell this year, he's going to definitely have to have that mower next year. Anybody that's lost something this year is going to have to have it.
Right.
You know, if, if Pat's vehicle is not in there, I guarantee, if we make it to next year, he'll have to have it in there the next year. And I can make notes of what that number in capital outlay, what I'm estimating, what that means, yes. Now, I would like to mention that, um, with me being gone next week, I didn't, do we want to get together prior to me leaving, or?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to be gone the rest of the, the rest of this week, and Monday, Tuesday of next week. And then when you're going to be gone, what?
I'll be gone next week. There's, there's no reason, I will get the documentation, everything out to you before I leave. But if you want to have discussion about it, if you don't feel comfortable with, the budget that's up there right now, gets you through what you need, you know, the road path. Um, and that can be passed for the first reading. And you still always have the opportunity to change it all the way through to the third reading. Are we going to have a work session for the next council meeting?
Well, I, I was, I was wondering if, if, I know, I know you're going to be gone, but Martha Carol-
She will be here.
We will be here. What about, uh, June the second?
The Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
Can we do it in the morning, early?
Can we do it early in the morning?
Your eight AM, my eight PM.
I can.
Eight AM?
It's my eight PM.
I'm happy with eight AM.
Seals it, puts you to bed?
I've been at work and I were, babe.
You won't be here that day?
Won't hurt me.
What about, what about that Friday morning? You've got hills on that day too? The third?
I mean, June third, all week, not two, four, two.
Are they all day?
We're, we're all day right there.
Just a case.
That evening?
Well, I'm trying to get Jean here too.
Oh, yeah.
Early, early's better.
Seven?
I, I'm there at seven.
Seven, two?
Yep.
Jean, are you up at seven?
I'm over here.
Eat chickens by then, or?
June the second at seven AM will be our next work session.
I appreciate that.
See, that's seven PM for me. Don't, don't confuse us.
Anything is changing for me.
Now, you're the only one that has one that operates, so.
Okay, everybody okay with, uh, where we're at right now? As of this, as of right now? With fresh information to come?
Beth, I'm going to give you my stack.
Okay.
Because we'll get a new stack.
Yep, we've got a new stack, and I, yeah.
Can we put a date on these?
Oh, yeah, you can do that. And I apologize, because I wrote my date on mine.
We've got, I mean, I've got probably ten copies.
It's on the top of these.
Yeah, it's on this one.
It'll be on the future ones, because it's on the top of this one, so it'll, we'll change it.
It does get confused.
Okay, you got the copy.
Oh, um, and for the media as well. City Hall and the annex will not have power in the morning, so about next.
Just City Hall?
No, just these, they're, the transformer, the big green box you see out there, they are converting, uh, in the morning, and they give us a choice between morning-
Good to see her afternoon, and we chose morning.